Thank you for cooking.
Well, thank you all. I was gonna smell like bourbon for a day or two earlier, so. So you'll see dog, tomorrow night we'll have lunch and all. Tomorrow night I'm gonna do pizza, if that's alright to everybody, I'll do pizzas. Let somebody sponsor steak, I'll cut them and buy some plates. But I appreciate y'all, you know, we usually try to do food and I've got barbecue on the cook and I've Billy got the hot dogs and Robbie done the beans, so thank you all for doing that. So we're not every meeting, we're not gonna have two days. And next year, depending on what the budget. Looks like we're running out of food, we gotta cut stuff, there won't be no food going, we'll have to cut that, so. Alrighty, we'll start in, is the way we done it last night alright with everybody? Okay. On the first part, on page thirty-five, is the first that you got there, and that's courthouse and jail maintenance, that's a very small fund that we put some in for the courthouse. Three hundred dollars up there on that, and then the total three thousand dollars, that's what we put in every year, but we've not spent any of that, that's just in case we have to do something on the courthouse, because it's a separate. I think when we done the roof, we had it in that, when we done the roof on the courthouse a few years ago, so. Last year we budgeted three thousand, didn't spend anything, this year the same, next year we budgeted three, we just gave it that way in case we gotta do some work on it. Total estimated expenditures, three thousand thirty dollars, and we spent four dollars, it says, I don't know what we got for four dollars, but. We budgeted fifty dollars this year, spent four, so all in total, three thousand fifty dollars is what we budgeted. The fund balance, at the bottom of page, we estimated, starting July one, nine thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, we ended up with ten thousand two twenty-nine in the budget last year, and we actually came in thirteen two fifty-seven, because we didn't spend that, so. Estimated for this year, starting July one, ten thousand eight eighty-nine, and estimated at the end of the year next year, eight thousand two fifty-four, that's if we spend the whole eight, or three thousand, which we probably won't, so. Very small fund, but. Alright, next page is the solid waste, on thirty-six. Solid waste fund, revenues, of course that's got local taxes, local office sales tax, and property tax. We budgeted eight hundred seventy-one thousand, two seventy-two last year, and we actually brought in nine hundred fifty-two thousand, and that's the extra sales tax we got. This year we budgeted nine hundred fourteen thousand, we brought in nine hundred twenty-eight thousand so far, with one month to go, so we're gonna be ahead of last year also, because of the extra sales tax. But next year we budgeted nine hundred twenty thousand, that way we don't estimate high in case the sales tax drops off, but more likely it will go up, so. Charges, tipping fees, when people bring building materials out, have to pay, and companies come, that's what that is. We budgeted two hundred twenty-one thousand last year, we brought in two hundred forty-three thousand. This year we budgeted two forty-one, and so far, two hundred one thousand, so we're budgeting two hundred forty-two thousand for next year. But that fluctuates, but a lot of the new houses we're getting, a lot of people are paying to get rid of that stuff, the construction materials, so. Other local revenues, sale of recycled materials, that's the biggest thing we've got right now, even the head aluminum and metal is cardboard, but the price fell out of cardboard, the bottom fell out of it, and it's not bringing half what it did a few months ago, so. That will probably, I'm just, I'll tell you, for next year it will probably be down, because the last load of cardboard was bringing seventy dollars or whatever per hundred, and it brought thirty-nine, so the price has failed a lot, so I don't know. We budgeted sixty-five thousand last year, and we brought in a hundred and four thousand. This year we budgeted seventy-two thousand, we brought in fifty-eight so far, budgeting seventy-two thousand again, but. I mean, it, I said, it may be lower next year, because the cardboard was still bringing like it was, so. There's thirty-seven, we're on the solid waste chain, but. And that's got grants in it, a lot of that, grants for recycling and signs and used oil, which we got a few years ago, and. So, total estimated revenues, last year we budgeted a million three eighty-six, and we actually brought in a million four oh five. This year we budgeted a million six thirty-seven, and we brought in a million one eighty-seven. But the reason that's so much lower, well, we did not get that grant, our two hundred thousand grant. We were gonna try to buy a new truck with that, which we bought a new truck, but not with a grant, so. So some of the reason that's less, the revenue, is because we didn't get the grants we applied for, so. This year estimating revenues again at a million six hundred thirty-five, because we put those grants back in there in case we do get them, which, you know, we never know if we're gonna get those or not, so. Alright, so. On down into expenditures. Now that's got contracted service and liability insurance, core out at the solid waste. Ninety-eight thousand dollars budgeted last year, and they expended sixty-nine thousand. This year a hundred nine thousand budgeted, and used sixty-eight thousand, so. Cut it back a little to a hundred seven thousand five hundred, which is, you know, in line with what we had last year, so. Next part is the convenience centers, and that's all the people that work at all the convenience centers and the site in town. That's got all the laborers and social security and state retirement, if you roll in the next page. It's got maintenance on the buildings and equipment, which should go down a lot, because in the past, we had backhoes tearing up constantly. We've had, we've bought two new backhoes in the last two years, so that part should be better. Total expenditure, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, we budgeted last year, we only spent one ninety-four. This year we budgeted four hundred seventeen thousand, and we spent a hundred eighty-three. So this year we're budgeting four hundred twenty-four thousand, but that, you know, we will be spending that if we get the grant. If we don't, that's why we're spending much less than we're showing, because we didn't get the grants, so. Next part's got the, everybody at the Livingston site, the supervisor and the foreman and the equipment operators, the truck drivers, and that's got maintenance at the Livingston site. Roll in the next page on thirty-nine, it's got other equipment, and that's where we bought the backhoes out of. Solid waste equipment, so total, we budgeted nine hundred seventy-nine thousand last year, and we spent seven hundred ninety thousand. This year we budgeted a million three seventy-eight, and we spent nine hundred seventeen. So we're again, we're budgeting a million three eighty-nine for expenditures, but a lot of that's grants, so who knows if we'll get that or not, so. The next part is more of the recycling center. Connie, the other equipment on that one, you know. Seven ninety. Then where we got the compactors.
I think it's the containers.
Container, okay, we bought a bunch of new containers, because in containers, they don't, the ones that are on compactors don't last that long at all, because when all that trash is pushed in them, and then they get a little rusty, it pushes the sides out, and we found that you can buy new containers cheaper than when you get them welded and fixed, because the cost of the metal and getting it welded, it costs more to weld those old containers back together than it does to buy one. New ones, and we got a grant for a lot of those, so. Total on that, a hundred fifty-three thousand budgeted last year, and we spent ninety-two. This year we budgeted three hundred eighteen thousand, and we got a hundred twenty-five thousand, we've spent a hundred twenty-five thousand. Some of that's where we put in, where we thought we might get a, another grant, which we did. Next year we're budgeting three hundred forty-five thousand. We just took that money in there for equipment, in case we need to buy a truck, we had to, we sold the one old truck, and we got a new truck, and then the. Probably in the next couple of years, we're gonna need to buy another new truck, and do away with that oldest one we got now, the second best one for a spare, because in the past, we had a truck sitting there that wouldn't work for a spare, and sometimes they need all three trucks, because we've got, I mean, the way Rickland's growing, as much trash coming in at the site and all the other ones in the county, it's handy to have three, because a lot of times when we had two, one of them would be down, when we had one truck for the whole county, which didn't work out too good, so. And that other part, under waste disposal, crushed stone and fertilizer, that's for the old landfill, we have to fertilize that and keep that grass going out there, so it don't wash, and that's just part of our TDEC requirements. Forty-five hundred last year, we budgeted, we spent nine hundred, and we budgeted sixty-five hundred this year, not spending any, so we're putting the same amount, just depends, I mean, the highway department's been good, come out and help us. We've had to fill in a lot of dirt, because it's washed, it's pretty steep on one side, and the road washed out, and James come out there and helped us and fixed the road. The next part, post-closure costs, to start with, it was supposed to be, I think, twenty-five years, and I think nineteen ninety-four is when we closed the landfill, my opinion is we'll never be out of post-closure, and what that means is we have to get the water tested, there's wells all over the site. The county's responsible for the landfill we had, plus the old landfill, because we entered an agreement for some reason in the nineties to take over the other part, so. We had to put a liner in it a few years ago, which keeps all the stuff from moving out. We had a company doing the testing, and they weren't doing us right, and we were spending a whole lot more money, and I changed companies, and they were showing things in the water here that nobody ever showed in Tennessee, which brought a red flag from TDEC, and I changed companies, and we're back to the levels we were ten years ago, so. We've got a person that's drinking well water, that's right on the site, but we have to test their water, and their water shows good. Now, if it ever shows in their water, the agreement is that we have to put city water into them to pay for that, for him, which right now he don't want that, he said his water's better than the city water we got, which that's his opinion, I guess. But it, it shows good every year, so if something happens, I mean, we may have expenditures, you know, in one of these lines to put water to him, but that's just an agreement we got when we closed the landfill, but. Testing, they test four times a year, and there's several wells all over the property, there's eight or nine wells, and they have to come out, and. And, but the one we had before said we had to have a pump in one of them, and it was about twenty thousand dollars, and TDEC said we didn't need the pump, they're bailing it, they run a thing down their own stream, pull it out, they said the pump was stirring up things and showing, like they were walking upstream and testing our water downstream, after they walked in it and got it muddied, that's why. You know, so they weren't doing right, and they were showing a lot of things, I believe the reason we're, you know, if we stay in this company, we got it, maybe one day we'll get out of having to do this, because after so many years, if it shows good, we don't have to do the test anymore. But basically, there's no county in the state that's ever got out of doing the testing, so I'm sure we'll never get out of it either. I'm just gonna be honest about it, and they say twenty-five years for that, if something shows then, they'll make us do another ten, and if something ever shows, it'll be, so fifty-five thousand, last year we budgeted, and we spent thirty-two thousand. This year we budgeted seventy-one, because we were in TDEC. We were in violation, because the one that was testing was not doing the testing when they're supposed to, and TDEC's supposed to be on site when they do it, and they were testing without them there, so. They weren't doing right, this year we've only spent eighteen thousand, so you'll see, that's the difference, because we got this new company testing it, that's actually doing what they're supposed to do. We budgeted seventy-one thousand for next year, but I, I'd say we will be less, because this company's doing really good as far as who we got testing it, so. Total expenditures, a million six seventeen, we budgeted last year, and we spent a million one hundred seventy-nine thousand in solid waste. We budgeted two million three hundred thousand this year, and we've spent a million three hundred thirteen thousand so far. Next year we budgeted two million three forty-four, basically for the grants, different, so. Like last night, we were talking about solid waste fund, it's like all the other ones, we're not spending everything in the ten. On the next page, it shows access or deficiency of revenue over expenditures, we're actually under. We budgeted, we would spend two hundred thirty-one thousand over budget, but we actually come in two hundred twenty-five over what we thought we'd have, so. We're budgeting seven hundred nine thousand this year, less, so. Down to your fund balance, we budgeted last year, starting July one, a million four seventy-seven, and we budgeted that we would end in June thirty, a million two thirteen, but we actually come in a million six seventy-one, so we, you know, we didn't spend everything in the budget, so. This year we budgeted a million six seventy-one, July one, and nine hundred seventy-six thousand at the end of June, because we budgeted we would spend more than we brought in, but we've actually spent so much less, the fund balance, we're showing now a million five thirteen, so right now, the fund balance is, you know, like it was last year, so. But if everything gets spent this next year, like we were talking about last night, we would be down to seven hundred seventy-two thousand in fund balance in this fund, which we put ten cents in this fund, like we do to the highway department, this fund is in pretty good shape, I mean, this fund's usually ever, because of the sales tax coming in, so. Any questions about that part? Alright, next page is the drug fund. And that's just fines coming in, revenues, we budgeted twenty-two thousand last year, and we got twenty-four thousand. This year we budgeted twenty-four thousand, and we got thirty thousand. So next year, we budgeted twenty-eight thousand seven hundred in revenue. On down through the next part, it's got juvenile court, which that's a two hundred dollar budget. And there's federal money, so total, we budgeted last year twenty-six thousand, two seventy-five for revenue, and we got twenty-seven thousand. This year we're budgeted twenty-eight thousand, we got thirty-three thousand, so we're budgeting thirty thousand for next year in revenue. Expenditures, nothing on that page, if you go to page forty-three. That's got equipment and things that sheriff needs, toll and travel for the drug fund. Twenty-three thousand last year, we budgeted in expenditures, and we spent sixteen. This year we budgeted thirty-two, and we spent eighteen, so we're budgeting twenty-five thousand expenditures for the drug fund, which on the next page shows. Fund balance, we budgeted July one last year, seventy-nine thousand, and we showed that we would end up eighty-two thousand at the end of the year, but we actually ended up ninety-one thousand at the end of the year, so we, we came in more, because we spent less than the budget. This year we budgeted eighty-two thousand, starting July one, and we showed that we would have seventy-seven thousand at the end, but right now we're estimating we'll have a hundred and six thousand, so we're bringing in more than that fund that we spent, so that fund's been shaved, so. The fund balance on that one is higher too, than it started off two years ago, so. Alright, forty-five is the highway department, now the highway department's mostly state funding, the county puts ten cents in, plus the mineral tax, so. Unlike some of the other funds, I mean, these, we just vote yes or no, but I mean, we don't. The highway department controls the mine items on this, and then we just vote yes or no, but some, and we do give more than most counties, a lot of counties don't give any property tax, and we give ten cents plus the mineral tax, which helps that much. We budgeted four hundred and thirty-four thousand last year in taxes to the highway, but we actually, they got four hundred and sixty thousand. This year we budgeted four sixty-two, and they've already got five hundred and five thousand, and now I'm accounting this last month, so. Next year we budgeted four hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we kinda kept it about a little more than last year, but who knows on that, because the mineral severance, depending on how much sand comes out of Maurey or hanging land, it goes up and down, depending on the minerals they give, because they get so much of that, so. Other revenues, there's sale of equipment, which when they sell on gov deals, they've got some budgeted for that, so. We budgeted two thousand last year, and they got twenty-five thousand, which they sold some recycled materials, and this year we budgeted ten thousand, and they got twenty-two thousand, so next year we budgeted fifty-two thousand, may have, you have some vehicle, there's some equipment you're gonna sell?
Yeah, a lot of good equipment for our country.
So going into the next page, state of Tennessee, this has got you, this is the main money that comes in the highway department, the gas tax and the bridge program, and this has got state aid, this is everything that comes through, three million dollars we budgeted last year, and they got two million eight fifty-nine, this year we budgeted two million six thirty-seven, and they've already got two million eight thirty-seven. So next year we're budgeting two million seven hundred sixty-eight thousand in revenue from the state, which the gas tax goes up and down just a little, depends on what gas is sold, so, never know exactly on that, but. Depends on what state aid programs he's got going, and that's, you know, it's ninety-eight-two, and they match two percent, they pay roads with state aid money, which it paid for most of it, so. And the federal, fifty-two thousand, last year we budgeted nothing, we got fifty-two thousand federal money, this year we budgeted a hundred and eight thousand. So total revenues, last year we budgeted three million four seventy-four, and got three million four oh one. This year we budgeted three million one ten, and they've already got three million three sixty-five, and we still got the next month to go. Budgeted three million four oh three for next year, which is up a little from last year's budget, so. And expenditures, and that's got James and all the salaries through it, and then if you go into the next page. James's is kinda like mine, it's got James's salary, and the Arwins in it, and it's got everybody in the office files and everything on that one, and it's a separate, budgeted a hundred fifty-five thousand last year, and they spent one forty-seven, this year budgeted one sixty-four, and they spent one forty-nine, so one seventy-two's budgeted this year, and that's just a mandatory basis, it's about the state. So the next part, highway and bridge maintenance, and that's where all your highway department employees work. And that first one, it says supervisor director, and it says a hundred and six thousand, that's not one person. When I got elected in two thousand and two, I asked the road supervisor at that time, and he got mad about it, because I, but you know, looking at it, it looks like it's one person, that's four people salary, so when I first looked at it, I thought, boy, we're really paying somebody good to supervise the bridges, but that's not what it is, so that's. And equipment operators, that's several people, and truck drivers and laborers, and that's, that's everybody working out there, so. Roll into the next page, and that's also got coal mix and asphalt and stone and everything they buy out there, so last year we budgeted, come in.
I wanna say though, the coal mix and hot mix and liquid asphalt, we really increased those due to the gas tax increase, that six, seven cents and that ten cents for the diesel, so we, we putting nearly a million dollars in next year for road repairs, so. That's a big jump compared to where we've been in the past, so I want everybody to see that, and know that, that's what we're dealing with. Under four oh three, four oh four, four oh five.
Yeah, that's a lot, four hundred next year budgeted for coal mix, and then fifty thousand for hot mix, and three hundred for liquid. A million two sixty-two is what we budgeted last year, expenditure, and they spent a million two twenty, this year budgeted a million five eighty-one, they spent a million two eighty-one, but we still got one month, budgeting a million seven thirty-five, and that difference is extra money that Arwin's talking about, it's coming in from the gas tax, they're gonna put back on the revenue, so. And the next part is the maintenance out there, and maintenance of equipment, which that's a lot, because of the quarry and everything, and the equipment having to work on, and that's the mechanics and everything, so if you roll into the next page. We budgeted five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and spent five twenty-four last year, budgeted six twenty-eight this year, and they spent four sixty so far, so. Right now, we're budgeting six hundred and eighty-three thousand for next year, that's, that's got money in it for equipment, two hundred thousand, but depends on if they have to buy equipment or not, because you never know on the equipment, I mean, we're. How many years are we out from when we bought all those trucks?
We're one year out of it.
I mean, but how, but how, what year was it we bought those?
Oh six.
So we're thirteen years in about when we bought trucks.
Yeah, that loan's paid back.
That loan's paid back, we paid part of it, and they paid part, and we're a long time from where, and there's a lot of repair on them trucks, which has been several years on them, so I know James has been getting some trucks at surplus, when they have some available, but one of these days we'll be looking, now, one thing to tell for the ambulances, when we, these trucks, when we get done with the ambulance, we've been rolling them into the highway department, and they don't have to buy trucks, that's saved us quite a bit, that saves us more than we would sell the ambulance for, because that's, you know, saving them to buy trucks.
And we appreciate y'all doing it for us too, because it's saved us a bunch of money in time. You know, we just got a backhoe from the recycle center. Transmission was out, we spent twelve thousand dollars on it to get it fixed, we got a new backhoe for us, so. It's got higher, it's in good shape, so things like that's really kept the highway department going.
Well, one thing to tell, we can't transfer funds from the solid waste, to the highway department or not any other fund, but if we buy a new backhoe, they're just saying we can't donate it to the highway department, out of that one fund, that's what we've been doing, so. But those ambulances just have a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Thirty, forty thousand.
You can't run them for an ambulance store, but that, that's just getting broken in for a truck to use for highway department, so that saves us quite a bit, so. Five hundred and sixty-nine thousand budgeted for maintenance of equipment, and they spent five twenty-four, this year six twenty-eight, four sixty, six eighty-three for next year, but like I said, who knows on the equipment, it may be less. Next part's quarry, two hundred and four thousand budgeted last year, and they spent one fifty-eight, this year budgeted two fifty-eight, and they spent one forty-five, budgeting two hundred and sixty-two for next year. The quarry saves a lot for them to buy rock, but the quarry is a costly deal running, I mean, it's electricity and everything. I see the electric bills when we sign the POs, and it, it costs a lot to run, but it saves us a lot too, where we don't have to buy rock all the time. And James, I know he got a crusher a few years ago from out west or something that really saved too, so. Next part's insurance, liability insurance, and. Go on in with the other charges, workers comp, total of other charges, a hundred eighty-five thousand. Budgeted last year, they spent one forty-six, budgeted two hundred this year, and they spent one fifty-two, so. Budgeted a hundred ninety-five for next year, the workers comp on that one is more than most, other than the ambulance and the sheriff's department, because highway department's also another job that's high risk as far as workers comp claims. Next part's insurance and unemployment and social security, which are employee benefits, budgeted four hundred and seven thousand, they spent three sixty-seven last year, budgeted four sixty-one this year, and they spent three fifty-three, so we're budgeting four hundred and seventy-two thousand, and that's, that's just all for regular raises, the extra social security and retirement and everything is all for regular raises, so. Next part's capital outlay note, this is for the bridge project, engineering services, and state aid paving projects. Capital outlay note is for where we're already for the bridge itself, which we're gonna, that money's gonna flow back through, most of the money, James has worked on that for several years, trying to get this program, we're gonna have very minimal cost in this bridge, it's about five million dollars. Is it five, or is it?
It's three and a half million.
But it's gonna cost us?
Thousand dollars, a thousand dollars.
But James has worked on it for a long time to get that, so he's ready to help us on that, so.
That's the bridge down here, the parallel bridge, yeah, our bridge.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
See you later, see you later.
People's not gonna, it's not gonna be popular when that bridge's down, but it's gotta be fixed, it's old, it's old, it's what, thirties or forties?
Yeah, the state condemned it, we had to do it, we didn't have choice, because it was on the hyperbolic bridge, so. We were able to eat it on the V R Z, and of course, we can't, we can't flow the money out of our budget, so that's really why we're having to borrow the money to do it, because it's a reimbursement program, so every time, you know, it takes about forty-five days to get our money back, but. It, it's gonna be pretty well ninety-eight percent funded by the state to pay it, so.
That's good, now, this is, you know, one eleven's the best thing you probably have in the county as far as road, bringing everybody in, but what happened when we got one eleven, is the state made a state forty-two, and we got all the cost of redoing that, so that, that's the bad part of it. But one eleven's more than paid for one, but one day we'll have to do a paving project on forty-two, and that's eight miles, so you're talking about a million dollars probably for that, or close to it, we'll have to, because that's the longest county road we've got that's actual asphalt, but state paid it when they give it to us, but that's been several years ago, so. That's what happens when a new road opens, they make us, but then there's no other option, we just have to take it, so that's. So total expenditures, budgeted three million seven twenty-six last year, and they spent three thirty-three. Budgeted three million seven seventy-six this year, and they've only spent two million seven thirty-one, so budgeted three million nine fifty-two, and that's because some of the stuff for the bridge is not, hasn't spent yet, so. On the next page, total expenditures. Last year budgeted, like I said, three seven twenty-six, they spent three thirty-three, budgeted three seven seventy-six this year, and they spent two seven thirty-one. Budgeting three nine fifty-two, because this year capital outlay note will have to be paid on, on the bridge project, but that'll be flowback money, so. Last year estimated, starting the year, a million sixty-five thousand in July one, and estimated at the end of the year, it'd be a million three eighteen. It actually came in a million three eighty-six, so they spent last, you know, they started off more. So we start off this year a million three eighty-six, we estimated if they spent everything in their budget, and like we were talking last night, which was over revenue, they'd be down to seven hundred and nineteen thousand, but right now we're at a million three fifty-three, because they've not spent everything in their budget, so the fund balance is good. Next year projecting, starting off with the million three fifty-three, at first of July, and showing, end up at eight hundred and four thousand, if they spent everything in the budget, which like those departments, they're not gonna do that, so. Any question on that one? Alright, the next one's the debt service. We put ten cents into that too, and that's what pays the payments on everything, eleven cents is the, that's what pays payments on all the notes we have, and we've got bonds out. So we, we budgeted local taxes coming in, three hundred ninety-seven thousand last year, and we got three hundred eighty-four thousand. We budgeted four hundred two thousand this year, and we've got three hundred ninety-eight so far, and. We budgeted four hundred and two thousand this year and we've got three hundred and ninety-eight so far and, uh. We've got a month to go, so we're budgeting four hundred and six thousand for next year, so like I said, that's up and down depending on the utility taxes and things like that, so. Investment income on this next one, other revenues, that just depends on the money we've got invested in the bank, the payee does, some, the interest rates go up and down. We budgeted seventy-nine thousand last year and we got two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Budgeted seventy-nine this year and we've got four hundred and twenty-five thousand so far in revenue from that. So next year we're budgeting two hundred and one thousand, which will probably be more than that because the interest rates are good right now, so. The next part is state T V A revenue sharing. We budgeted five hundred and seventy-two thousand last year and we got five seventy-seven. We budgeted five seventy this year and we got four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And this coming year we're budgeting a million five seventy. And another revenue for a million. The V R Z money coming, okay. The, the revenue sharing from T V A, it's off the amount of electricity sold, but everybody's going to energy efficient things and the, and we've got grants and it's saved us money. But the bad part about that is when they sell that less electricity, we get less money from them on revenue sharing, so. So I guess it all rolls around, so. Next part, now that first, that's federal government, that was disaster money, that was where we got stuff from the ice storm, which we don't have anything in our this year, so. Nothing budgeted on that part. Uh, estimate revenues and the debt service, we budgeted a million two oh seven last year and we brought in a million three twenty-six. This year we budgeted a million two fifty-one. We've already brought in a million two eighty-two with one month to go. So we're budgeting two million one seventy-seven next year, but that's kind of that extra money on the V R Z project, so. Expenditures, principal on notes, on bonds is the bond we have that runs out in two thousand and twenty-four. The notes, that's where we paid on that rural development, one of them paid off industrial park. Uh, we budgeted a million two twelve last year and we spent a million one fifty-seven. Uh, we've been, budgeted a million twenty-three, this year we spent a million eight, so we've got, you know, that note paid off, so we don't have anything on notes. Except a million dollars for the V R Z project, that's what's on there. And principal on bonds, six hundred and ten thousand. Is the principal on the big bond we've got, but after two thousand and twenty-four, we're debt-free on that one. The only thing we'll have unless something happens between now and then is the building, which is on twelve years, so. We could be to where we could pay it off, because we were trying when we got notes paid off, pay off something else early. So when we get out of two thousand and twenty-four, we could be able to, because that's on a note, it's not a bond. Bonds you can't pay off early. Notes you can, so we could pay the building off and. Our whole, me and Connie talked about it, maybe six to eight years, but it just depends on what's going on then at that time. I mean. It's nice to have that option if we wanna pay it off, but if something happens, which we have to help the schools do something, so the payments are rolling up and then when this bond runs out. The debt service fund will be in really good shape because we won't have that bond payment, so. Interest on the next part, uh, we budgeted paying a hundred and ninety thousand, we paid one fifty-two. This year we budgeted one fifty-six and we paid a hundred and three thousand. That's just because we saved on interest before we paid off those notes. Uh, next year we're budgeting three hundred and ninety-two thousand and that's because of the, uh, interest on the note for the V R Z and the interest on the regular bond. And that bond we refinanced a few years ago and we're gonna. We've got opportunity to read it, I'm gonna bring it up at the budget committee, Connie brought that up, this bond, it runs out in two thousand and twenty-four. The interest rates several years ago, we refinanced everything we had and saved, we saved the school seventy-two thousand dollars a year for ten years on one bond. We, and I done that, Ron refinanced the one before that, saved them. Uh, this bond, we could refinance and how much do we think we'll save total? So it's worth refinancing to save a hundred thousand dollars for the same amount of year, so they're running numbers now, so if that's possible. We'll bring that up to you all about refinancing. It'll still be two thousand and twenty-four, but we'll save a hundred thousand in interest, so. Yeah, so yeah, it's, the interest will drop and, and we, when we refinanced to start with, when I was on the commission, I looked at it, I mean, we have to pay fees to do it. But we're just gonna save a hundred thousand dollars, so if we can save a hundred thousand, even though we've got fees, we need to go ahead and do it and save that one, so.
That's net of the cost.
Yeah, so. Connie's been good to look at that anytime we've got, we talked to Stevens, Inc., and anytime we've got a bond or something like that that we can save. Because we were, the school didn't know we could refinance that one and we done it and saved, like I said, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars over ten years. And the one before that, we saved that too and it kept it the same amount of years, so. Other debt service, on the general fund or on the debt service fund, twenty-six thousand we budgeted last year for other fees and we spent sixteen. This year we budgeted thirty-two thousand and we spent fifteen thousand, budgeting forty-two thousand for next year. Total expenditures in the debt service, a million four twenty-eight is what we budgeted last year and we spent a million three twenty-six. This year we budgeted a million two twelve and we spent a million one twenty-seven. Next year we're budgeting two million forty-five thousand. Now, on some of these, are we gonna start paying on this for the building next year and? Okay, so the interest on notes for two hundred, that's probably the one on the building. Okay, for the V R Z and the building, so we'll start next year on the building one. To the next page, um. At the bottom it shows total, we budgeted start July one, a million three hundred and fifty-three thousand in the, in the debt service fund balance. And we estimated that we would end a million one thirty-two and we did end a million one thirty-two. Uh, we're budgeting this year to start off July one, a million two eighty-seven. And we're budgeting at the end of the year to have a million four nineteen. Right now we've got a million two eighty-seven. At the end of June thirty and we budgeted, we started off with a million one thirty-two, so we spent less than what's went into the debt service fund and that's. That fund, in two thousand and fourteen, we had, we got handed them to us, we had notes for the ball state where we helped do that. We had for the library, where we built the library. We had the jail, where we're still paying on it. We had the industrial park property. We had the water line going to Rickland, we had the sewer line going to the Rickland, plus all the industrial property there, so we've got all those notes paid off. And with this new building, we've got less payments than we had five years ago. And the property taxes coming in more for that fund and the rates are lower, so. So while we have borrowed money, we paid it back off. The borrowed money for the ice storm, paid it off and for vehicles and now for the building. Or so healthy, we got the two million dollar donation for the building, that helped us a lot, but maybe we'll do the building in six years, pay it off, so. We do that and nothing else, out in the county would be debt-free for probably for the first time since eighteen oh six, or it's not gonna, who knows?
And that million dollars will be paid off in a year too. So we, we'll have to carry it off on our, on our schedule, so that, that was up our debt service as well.
Does anybody have any questions about, so with all these funds, highway and solid waste and debt service and all these funds, it's still like we talked about last night. Every department is spending the last of its budget, which is pretty much all that's, you know, serving us, going, we didn't have that, so.
Well, we're gonna go through the bar with any of them.